Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board of Education has been in closed session since 5:30 this evening for items listed on the agenda. And we have five members present with two absent, and at this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, tonight, we have the Budget Public Hearing for the 2019-2020 Annual Budget. So I would like to call that hearing to order. And Jenna, if you could call the roll, please.
Mrs. Stufan?
Here.
Mrs. Troutman?
Here.
Mrs. Hostler?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Here.
Five members present, two absent. All right. We will have an overview of the 2019-2020 Budget by Chris Walton.
So we talked about the budget last month. I just wanted to just go over the changes since last month. The Department of Revenue came out with an estimate which increased our revenues for corporate personal property replacement taxes by $300,000. On the expenditure side, we just revised the budget for salaries as we finished the hiring process. And so that was an update for salaries and benefits. We updated with the actual information that we have. And this results in a operating, just a very slight deficit, almost a break even, with revenues at $132.3 million and expenditures of $132.5 million. So that results in the operating deficit of $181,454. And then the total budget we have in there for the bond issuance that we did recently, so that results in the total revenues $216,40,0521 and total expenditures of $161,644,906. So that's really it as far as the budget goes. The overall certified staff increase this year is 10 positions that we increased since 2012. The certified staff has gone from 615 back in '11, '12 to 704 certified staff this year. So we've added 89 certified staff in eight years. That's it.
Okay. Are there any comments? Questions? Okay. Are there any public comments regarding the budget? If not, then we will adjourn and return to the regular meeting. Next on the agenda is public comments. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one on the list. Is there anyone else who would like to do public comment? Okay. Then we will move on to approval of Board Meeting Minutes. Item A, approval of August 27, 2019, and September 10, 2019 minutes. Are there any changes? Okay, then those minutes stand as presented. Approval of August 27, 2019, and September 10, 2019, closed session minutes. Those stand as presented. Next is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? Or, yeah, first of all, would someone like to pull an item? All right. If no one wants to pull an item, then is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through I.
I second. Hey, hang on a minute. Okay, so consent agenda, items A through I. All right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent. The motion passes. Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Item A, approval of resolution of the Board of Education transferring money from the Education Fund to the Debt Service Fund.
This is routine, and Chris can answer any questions you may have after the motion.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer money from the Education Fund to the Debt Service Fund for the purpose of payment of technology leases.
I'll second.
Any comment, questions?
Maybe a quick explanation.
The Illinois Program Accounting Manual requires us to pay for debt out of the Debt Service Fund, so we have to transfer the money from the Education Fund to the Debt Service Fund in order to pay the leases for the technology.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, go ahead, call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, five ayes, no nays, two absent. Motion passes. All right. Item B, approval of resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So this meets the legal deadline required by the state. Chris presented this thoroughly last month, and this is the legal requirement for a public hearing was held earlier. And so this is the passing of the resolution to approve the budget. And again, I think we've covered probably most of the information, but you could certainly ask questions during the discussion.
A motion?
I move that the Board of Education, oh, sorry. I touched my screen and it went away. Thank you. That the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 as recommended, and that the President and Secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
I'll second.
Okay, any comment, questions? We've had quite a bit of discussion in prior meetings, so this is more the formality. All right, go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent. The motion passes. Item C, approval of Superintendent's Annual Goals for the 2019-2020 School Year. The Superintendent and the Board will agree to two or three professional goals no later than October 1st of each year. Of each school year, the Superintendent and the Board have agreed to the following two goals. Goal number one, oversee the implementation of the operational plan and ensure that all 2019-2020 outcomes are met. Goal number two, lead the Behavioral Health Screening Committee to develop an action plan to help reduce the stress and anxiety levels of students. These goals directly support the district's overarching organizational goals of student achievement, district culture, finance, and district management. The Superintendent and the Board will review progress toward goal attainment in January of each school year. The Board will rate the Superintendent's progress toward or actual goal attainment as either satisfactory or unsatisfactory as part of his final summative evaluation by June 1st of each school year. And if I could have a motion.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Superintendent's Annual Goals for the 2019-2020 School Year. I second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent. The motion passes. Item D, approval of changes to District Office Administrative Assistant Compensation.
So the District Office Administrative Assistants are not part of a collective bargaining unit. They had a pay structure that has been in place for a while, and what we have found with a comparison salary study is that we're really no longer competitive for those types of positions, and we have been losing people who are taking higher-paid positions and having difficulty replacing them with people that have the skill sets that we need to do certain types of positions in the office for that same reason. So Mark has put together the proposal. We shared that with you several weeks ago. He can speak more to that as an introduction to the motion, since this is a newer item that you may want to have some more rationale, more clearly explained than just that general introduction. So Mark, if you want to explain a little bit about what you did with the comparison study and how you established some of the rates that you thought were appropriate, this was done in conjunction with Chris.
So going back as far as 2012, the base salary for our administrative assistants in the district office was set at $35,000. In 2015, rather than a salaried amount, it was shifted to an equivalent hourly rate of $17.88. But since 2012, that base rate has not changed. So in the last seven years, the economy has improved and unemployment has gone down, but our base rate has not changed. Our employees in the district office have received CPI rate increases, but, you know, in an era where now we're starting to see minimum wage start to creep up, or eventually it's going to get up to $15 an hour by, you know, by 2025, and we're going to see a $2.75 increase in the minimum wage in the next 15 months by January 1st of 2021. We felt it prudent to take a look around. Different districts have different-sized central offices and different amounts of personnel, so it is difficult to compare apples to apples. You can compare principal salaries and teacher salaries, but, you know, the exact functions of the district office are a little bit more difficult to compare apples to apples. But you can look on, you know, your basic sites, like Glassdoor, or Monster, or LinkedIn, for what an administrative assistant going rate is. And in the DuPage County, Chicagoland area, it's really, it's about $38,000 to start, and then depending on the nature of the position, the more technically skilled positions can be, you know, starting in the $44,000 range. And we do have a number of our individuals in our district office which are asked to work in state systems, work with grants, do things, they're very sensitive, and handle information which, if not done properly, can lead to significant penalty. So we want to have high-quality people in those positions. And in the last few years, we have started to see some turnover. Learning and Teaching Department, the Finance Department, Special Education have seen people leave for higher-paying positions. In fact, when I was in Learning and Teaching for two years, we had three different assistants in one chair in those two years because, you know, one went to a different, you know, one went to take a position at a college, one went to take a position in a private industry because of money. So we felt appropriate to take a look. We set the base rate from $17.88 to $19 an hour for an entry-level position, but also rewarded our positions a little more highly skilled with a base rate of $20.50 an hour. We believe that's much more competitive with both private industry and other public entities such as, you know, villages, school districts, et cetera. I hope you entertain any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the changes to the District Office Administrative Assistant Compensation. I second.
Discussion, questions? Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the thorough information, and hopefully it'll help the district to not have so much turnover if we can hang on to some good employees. So thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, so I know that we have looked at all the major groups now, right? Was this the last group that we hadn't looked at comparators and competitive salaries?
We still have probably a few different employees. I know tech is an area where we may do some, a bit of looking around. There are really, this year, we don't have any contracts of our three unions that are up for bargaining, so we're looking at our non-union staff just to make sure that we're, you know, we're staying competitive. But that's something that Dave Smith and I have talked a little bit about, but we're going to be looking at that, too, as we look at his department. Karen, as you know, we've worked together on the Technology Committee, and the size of that department has not changed, even though we've added literally thousands of devices in the hands of students. So that's something that's going to be a little bit more of a long-term project, but for right now, we have taken a look at just about every job description and every position.
Because, you know, we do that with our bargain groups. We hadn't done it with the Superintendent and Cabinet, and we had done that a couple of years ago. So I think it's important for us to keep our administrative assistants as well. So I think it was the right thing to do from that standpoint.
I would also add that I had said to, when we did the first salary study, which was my first year here, the 2015-16 school year for administrators, and we approved, that spring, we approved a compensation system that had ranges for different positions for starting salaries, as well as some other factors that were put into their, into the plan. I said at that time that I would review that every three to five years to make sure that that would still be competitive. And we do have some things that I think have stabilized that a little bit with our pay structure, but we also, it's time to take a look at it, and there may need to be some different positions or some minor adjustments, or take a look at that. So I have some of my administrative interns redoing the salary study to see if our ranges are still in the, are still competitive for those positions as well. So I expect to bring something forward later in the school year before we approve salaries for those groups as well, if there is a need to consider any adjustments there.
Anything else? Okay, call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to Superintendent's Communication, Facilities Update.
So the community presentations are scheduled for next week, Monday at Bryan, Tuesday at Edison. Then there's another Finance and Ops meeting for November 19th. There should be some updates coming to interior design concepts and some possible other things that we would include on that meeting agenda, one of which I'll touch on in just a minute. But I don't know what Chris has in mind for potential other items for that meeting. But they are working on designs, the final designs, that will allow us to develop the bid packages. We, after that Finance and Ops meeting, we would come back at the December Board Meeting with another update on plans. And then we would look to get the bids out in January and have them approved in February. And that is all accurate, correct, Chris? Then the other item that you see on there is the idea of beginning to take a look at what's going to be required to transition after these initial projects are complete in relation to the moving Lincoln students to these buildings, and all the various aspects of that that have to do with staffing and transportation, and school traditions, and operations of various different types of things that would be a change, such as the building schedules, the lunch schedules, the pickup and drop-off types of things. So there'll be various subcommittees that are formed with different groups of people being represented on that, depending on the nature of what they're working through. So some of those will be, will involve teachers. When it comes to the things at the school level, some of it will involve principals and district office people working together on things like staffing. So there will be a lot of involvement, but the makeup of those subcommittees will be different depending on their purpose. So we're going to get some of those initial planning meetings off the ground shortly after the holidays, once the bid packages are constructed. And part of what we'll need to do after the bids go out, too, is start to begin some conversations about potentially resequencing some of the work now that the funding, the funding plan has changed with the larger bond issuance. So that's all I have on the facilities, on the tran-
Wait, see if there's any.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions on that? All right, go ahead.
Okay. So that Finance and Ops meeting is November 19th. That was, that date wasn't set until shortly before this went in your packet. So then, last evening, at the Park Board Meeting, Park District Board Meeting, the Board authorized the initiation of formal conversations with the school district to negotiate an IGA for the purpose, or for the purchase of the Abbey property. It's expected that upon the completion of that agreement, the site will be part of a permanent solution to the Transition Center program. And so you're aware of the fact that that was being considered for several years now as one potential solution to finding a permanent site for the Abbey, considering that that property is adjacent to the high school. There could be various different things that get incorporated into our planning once we secure that property, but that is believed to be the best, the best path forward for the school district in order to resolve the Transition Center issue. And based on where the city is at, or the, excuse me, the Park District is at with its long-term planning, we are now able to publicly announce that we would like to move forward in that direction.
Thank you for that, for working on that.
Okay. So I do have a couple of other things that you asked me to-
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I didn't know if there were going to be questions about the Transition Center, but I do know that there were a couple of other things you wanted me to touch on. Okay.
So this is the first time that we're saying it. I mean, what's the process? Can you, like, shed some more light for the community?
Well, I want to respect the Park District because they have various different legal requirements associated with parkland, but I can say that we're looking at the appraisal values of the property and trying to come to an agreement on price, and that there will be various factors involved with the timing of when they get out and when we get into that building. So people should not assume that just because we're going to be able, hopefully, to come to an agreement soon to purchase it, that that means that all of a sudden, next year, we'll be able to resume occupancy. We have to do a lot of interior upgrades to, you know, satisfy the school code and the IDEA laws and all those kinds of things. So it's still a multi-year process, but we're a lot closer to, we're a lot closer to finalizing that than we were even just a few months ago, so.
Thank you for indicating that it's still a multi-year project.
And just, because this has been talked about before, but just, once the site is secured, then that would be something that you'd be working with, you know, getting input on some of the, from families and students, correct?
Yeah, I had talked with parents and actually students that want to be involved in these discussions. So we would have, like we've done with some of these other projects, we would have input groups and take a look at getting feedback on our current programming and our current facility and different things that we would work together with the architects and the Student Services people. But there would be, there would be opportunities for the public input and feedback throughout that.
Thank you. Courtney.
And I was just going to reiterate the same thing. Having gone through the Bryan process, I applaud how the process works involving all the important stakeholders, not just at the district and the school, but the community. And I wouldn't expect anything less than that for the Transition Center. Having gone to the Transition Center open house a couple of weekends ago, there's great ideas there. And I know that you are open to hearing those ideas, so I'm excited to hear about the collaboration between the architects and the families and the school and the administration, and see what a great project this can be for the community. I'm so excited that this is moving forward.
Last thing. While Michael's here with us, he has a lot of expertise in this area, so looking forward to your advice and input and feedback.
Well, that is a good point. SAS just did come off some construction projects, and so we will certainly tap into his expertise, like you say, while we can.
All right, thanks for that. And then I had asked, we'd gotten some comment, and we've been contacted about some sustainability things with the district, and so I had asked Dave to comment on that and where we are in that and the process. And then also, there were some questions that have come up about crossing guards, and so I also asked him to address that. I know sometimes in public comment, it feels like we don't, you know, we aren't hearing, but we are hearing, and we have to figure out a process to work through how we're going to evaluate the request and things that come from the community. So that is reflected in his report.
So as it relates to the sustainability issue, Chris Kozinski has some expertise in this area and reached out to help work with the Facilities Department to draft a sustainability plan for the district that we would, you know, publicly agree to, that this is our stance, this is our position, this is, you know, how we want to handle various different things as a district. And then those various components of the plan, we would, we would report on those periodically to the Board so that the Board would get updates and know that, whether it's efficiency targets or different processes, that those things were being adhered to and met. And so those two finally connected, I think about a week and a half ago. And what I was thinking was, was that we could do something, have an initial conversation at the Finance and Operations Committee so that Chris could explain and Todd could explain in greater detail what, what that, how that process looks. Chris has done this kind of thing before. Get a little bit of a shared understanding of that, and then they could do some of that work. And as that work moves along, I don't know what the exact timeline would be, but there would be a draft, draft plan that could then come back to the Finance and Operations Committee for an initial look and to the full Board for further discussion and approval. So those things are, you know, there are several things that we already do do, there are several things that are going to be part of the construction process, et cetera, but we kind of want to be able to have a formalized process so that we can demonstrate those things in a way where people understand them, and it's kind of formalized, it's available online, it's reported publicly periodically, that kind of thing.
Okay.
So the second thing is the question about crossing guards at our school sites. And the city employs crossing guards. We have an agreement with them, they provide those, we do not hire them, they're not our employees. The city makes determinations about where the appropriate places are for them to be stationed around town. We had concerns expressed a couple of years ago about the intersection at Fisher. The safety officer from Elmhurst actually investigated that intersection. I know Chris was out there several times. They do not feel that a crossing guard is warranted there because that is an intersection that is almost exclusively due to school traffic. You don't have the Spring Roads, the York Roads, the Butterfield Roads, the whatevers, where you have a lot of other traffic besides school traffic. So that's one of the criteria that they used, but at any rate, their recommendation was that they did not believe that that was needed. They also did say that they would not provide it even if it was something that was recommended because that is not in their jurisdiction. And they believe there are liability issues and other things like that if they employ somebody and ask them to perform duties outside of their actual jurisdiction. So District 205 does not supply crossing guards at any of its schools. We frequently get requests, we refer them to the city, the city constantly does studies around town. Neighbors request crossing guards, private schools request crossing guards. I mean, that's, you know, that's an ongoing thing. For example, people in Jackson have frequently expressed concerns in the Jackson neighborhood. We do not have crossing guards there. It's not the best pickup and drop off situation, but we do not have crossing guards at all of the intersections around that school that some people would like to see. Another example is Lincoln. There are some crossing guards in the neighborhood at different sites, but Lincoln has four different corners of that school based on how it's located in that property. And there are people between the traffic and the pedestrians that feel that there should be more crossing guards stationed around in that neighborhood. What Lincoln's done to solve that problem is they have PTA volunteers that come and help out. But we do not pay for crossing guards at our school sites. So there's a combination of the fact that the city doesn't think it's warranted, that was their advice to us when they tried to help us out. It's not in their jurisdiction. And, and we have at no time set a precedent for providing crossing guards, but I don't recommend that. If we did that, you would have many, many requests for crossing guards everywhere and I, and I don't know how we would potentially be able to manage that. But that is some background on that. And Chris, if I misspoke in any way, you could certainly feel free to chime in.
Any questions, comments?
Courtney?
So at several of the crossing guard positions that are out there now, I saw police, city police department officials out there this past week. Is that part of a normal annual review or periodic review that they give to determine whether or not those are appropriate placements of the guards?
I don't know exactly why the police were out there. What I do know is that the police have been good partners with us and they're very sensitive about having a presence. And I think they just kind of rotate depending on what their staffing is on a given shift to try to have a presence around the schools. So I don't know if you're talking about something different.
No, there was a uniformed officer, but then there was somebody clearly doing an evaluation of the traffic this past week. So I'm just curious if that was a normal review process for them or not.
Chris, I don't know if you know how they normally handle that. I can try to get you that information, I can do that.
Okay. Thank you for that, for those updates. All right, let's go to why we're all here. Kids, kids. All right, tweet of the week.
Good evening to the board and to the audience. We are here to talk about Tweet of the Week. And I want to give a shout out to a quiet MVP. For many of you, you were present last night during the Thrive D205 kickoff. And we heard a sometimes funny, sometimes sad, but an incredibly poignant presentation from Dr. Julie Lithgott-Hames regarding how to raise an adult. And the goal of Thrive D205 is to really impact and reverse the stress levels that our students are facing. And in so doing, talking to parents about how we can best do that in the community. It was a great partnership to make that happen, but the unsung MVP goes to @YorkD205, York High School. On the heels of homecoming, they hosted two major settings for Dr. Lithgott-Hames. One, an all-student assembly. You can imagine how many students going through the high school, coming down to the gym at that point in time, and then coming back to set up for and serve the community to a standing room only crowd in the York Commons. That took an incredible uplift from technology to our custodians, to everyone behind the scenes. It was a major, major effort and they really, really came through for us. So not only congratulations to Thrive D205 for a great kickoff, but there are a lot of people who made that happen. Thank you to York High School, @YorkD205. Tweet of the week.
Thank you. And thank you to your department because you clearly got the word out because it was standing room only on a Monday night and their Spurs game. And, and it was a fantastic presentation. So thank you for that. All right, any other board communications? All right. If not, then we have two upcoming meetings. Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:00 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, 7:00 here in District 205 Center. And if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.